So I definitely need to go.
So we're good to get started.
Good to go?
Yes.
All right, well, let's get going. We're going. All right, welcome, Rowan, to the Board of Trustees' Work Session. First item we have up on the agenda is a financial and budget discussion. John?
We handed out quickly to the board this little chart to try to keep it as simple as possible. And what we're trying to show is that if you looked at, we had the question, I think, the last meeting. And where are we at? Where are we running compared to budget? So if you look at the first item here, salary and benefits, which makes up the largest portion of the district budget. At the end of the third quarter, March 31st, we're at seventy-six point five percent of budget. So we're thinking at a quarter basis, we should be at seventy-five percent. So with the pay plan that was then put in place or in retroactive. That obviously, there's no additional money, so that was going to put us over budget. So what we've done to control that is not hire some key people. We had a couple manager positions that were not filled. And we've also with the LA ones and LA twos associated with the reopening of MK that have not been hired as well. So we're running close. But that one point six percent equates down to three hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars over budget in that line. And if you look at with the MK opening, if you look at that number, that three eighty-six, that's basically about a hundred and thirty thousand. A quarter, we have one quarter left. They take your hundred and thirty plus your three eighty-six, you know, you had four, you had five hundred and fifteen thousand over budget in that line item. Plus, we need to backfill the hole now created by the, hopefully, the reopening of MK. So we're going to be over five hundred thousand over budget and salary and benefits this year. That's why I want to make sure that you see from that, it doesn't look that bad when you just see that'd be six point five. Projected out, it's very scary. Materials budget is pretty much on target at that seventy-five point seven. Once again, the seventy-five was the goal, seventy-five point seven. Arrow will bring that in that budget, you know, based upon the last quarter. Where we're making up the biggest difference in the salary is in the operations and technology and capital. You can see both of those are significantly under budget. And those are really more some of our discretionary spends that we have. So Julie is confident that we'll bring this in within budget overall. But there are the challenges associated with the personnel, so I wanted to make sure that everyone recognizes that. Once again, the financial report, more detail of each line is in the in the board pack, so if you want to have one to dig into this deeper, you can, but this was at least gives you that quick snapshot into someone more. The other item that we have from the financial side, if the board would like to discuss more detail, is the purchase of the, it's on the approval of Maraki enterprise agreement. And if you want to have a little overview of that, Zach could provide that now. If you want to do that, or if you want to wait till the meeting.
That's for you.
Sure. Good enough. All right, Zach, you're up.
All right. Sorry, I put your butt in, I missed you. No, I'm good.
Nice table. All right, so Julie and I wrote up the agenda memo here for the approval of the Maraki enterprise agreement. Pretty clearly outlines the high points of this agreement that we'd like to move to. I do have some supplemental documents that I, Robin has included in your packet. And this is at the bottom, I think, buddy, in your packet, it's the Really, the biggest, the overview I want to highlight for all of you is, this is a Cisco-Maraki equipment. Yes, Cisco, yes. Yes, so Cisco makes Maraki, it is enterprise level equipment, it's just not as layered or as extensive as, say, what a hospital would use, or something more, or banks. That's right into stride for our type of environment and our type of organization. So if you remember, well, in two thousand and twenty-three, we migrated to Cisco-Maraki equipment, which does our network equipment as well as our security cameras. So it's all in one area, one dashboard, and we're able to manage it there. There's also, we purchased this through Worldwide, which is Omni Partnership, which has the technology, the Army or the statewide contract with Omni Partner Technology Solutions. So when we originally bought that, what that means is they've got the best price in the state for this equipment. So, yeah, we purchased this, we purchased, for those of you who are here, or might remember, is we had to buy the network equipment. Our network equipment was very old and we had to replace it, it was a priority. Then we bought and got into the camera, the security cameras, because we didn't have the coverage that we needed. So now we are at a place where we have grown from moving, currently, we go for transactional licensing costs. So we buy the licenses as we buy the equipment. The enterprise agreement will allow us to lock into a contract. And the contract that I would like to do is the seven-year contract. And the big portion, what that really holds out is the cost of our licenses are locked in for the duration of the, of the price, or of the contract. So right now, we did the major camera project. And then shortly, about a year and a half after, we did a second round of cameras to fill in the spaces. So for that second round of cameras, the licensing, we had to pay the market value at that time. So what's really nice about this is, as we add cameras, as we add network equipment, we are paying the locked-in fee that we have right now for the licensing. In the licensing, they charge us, we want to do an annual payment, so we want to pay once every seven years, and they charge us at the beginning of the year. So what that means is, if we grow in September, October, we buy equipment, buy cameras, we don't get charged for those for the licensing until July, when this comes around again. And then it's prorated through the duration of the contract. So this really allows us to maintain our, this really makes our budget manageable, so we can know what we're paying from a year-to-year basis, which then will allow us to future-proof, because I absolutely do not want to go through changing our entire network equipment throughout our entire district again. I don't want to do that again. So we can be strategic on how we upgrade this equipment. And it saves us money, I mean, it's a big money saver, and then it also allows us to utilize E-rate or best leverage E-rate to save us even more money. So with that, I can answer some questions, or what can I do?
Is the contract price locked in for the seven years, the same price, or is there an increase built in every year?
So the contract price, that's a good question, buddy. If you look at this document, the VAU versus the EA, in the timeline view here, that shows the transactional versus the enterprise, and our enterprise is locked in on that price, that forty-seven, one, five, seven, and seventy-eight cents. So that's locked in for the duration of the contract. Now, if we grow, then the licenses that, that we take on, say, we add more equipment, those licenses will then be added on.
At the market rate at that time.
No, at what we're locked in at.
Locked in.
Correct. Now, for the network equipment specifically, we do have to pay the difference, because that's the way that it's written out, and the technology grows and change. But for cameras and for access points, we are completely locked in on that pricing. So if you kind of look at it, right now, all of our Wi-Fi is Wi-Fi five, which is pretty standard, but you know, six is out there, and seven are options. We could, in this program, upgrade all of our access points to Wi-Fi six or Wi-Fi seven and not change the licensing fee, we just have to buy the equipment. So, and we can buy that equipment through E-rate. So that's, and that's fifty percent, we're a fifty percent organization, so E-rate covers half the price.
So Zach, going from the transactional to enterprise, if I just look at two thousand and twenty-six on this spreadsheet, your one year, you're estimating that's next fiscal year, that this will result in about a sixty thousand dollar savings to the district.
Correct, so this is an estimation based off of five percent licensing growth. In our time, in our short time that we've been doing, my short time in doing this licensing, purchasing that we're doing now, I've seen four percent and eight percent growth. So I, you know, when we put this in, five percent seems fairly conservative and an appropriate amount. So yes, we'd see immediate savings from there. This timeline view also factors in our equipment aging. And so that's why you'll see, not only is it the five percent growth, but it's also, we would have to be, we have to buy new equipment and new licensing. So if you look at the transactional portion of that.
So is the business as usual, total ninety-nine thousand dollars annual, is that what we're paying now?
That's a good point, no. If we, if we were to agree to a seven-year, right now, we're in the middle of a five-year contract. If we were to agree to seven years starting today, that's what we would pay. But right now, we've got, we've got a few five-year contracts that we're finishing out. We've got a few more five-year contracts that are just beyond that, like that second round of equipment that I was mentioning. So this would be if we were just on a seven-year and not in an agreement. So the agreement will also synchronize our licenses, so we won't have terminations in two thousand and twenty-seven, you know, renewals in twenty-seven, and in twenty-eight, and in twenty-nine.
But what we hold now would increase based on the market.
Right.
So, yes, yeah, I mean.
And so will you have to pay a termination fee on the rest of those licenses, or is that all wrapped into this new?
That's all wrapped into this, yes.
It's with them.
Yes.
So they'll roll it into it.
Correct. So they're taking, you know, essentially, we've got some that end in twenty-eight, those contract, those licenses, we will get all the money that we paid already, and then they'll just extend the contract for those, so we'll be on the same date. So we're not losing any value that we've already put into this.
Okay.
Yeah, is there anything else I can answer for you on any of these documents? Why should we be here? I think I hit the highlights that I wanted to hit, but I'm happy to answer anything else for you.
We have the questions from the board?
No, you're fine.
I just want to make sure I understand that the line here designated transactional.
Yes.
Two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-one. These numbers are your estimates?
These are the estimates from working with Worldwide. And actually, Worldwide put an estimate of seven percent growth. Like I said, I changed that to five percent, because I thought seven was a bit, I was not comfortable presenting seven percent as what that, as the licensing growth would be, so, yeah. And that's the seven percent increase in license cost.
Looking at the itemized list on the second page, the price per year. Those prices, yes, added up to about fifty-one hundred dollars per year. And I just multiplied that figure by seven, and came up with thirty-five thousand. So I'm wondering, why is the annual price on the front page forty-seven thousand?
Because these are all quantities of one in this true forwarding price, and we have multiple quantities of items in here. So this is just showing one license cost. One, one license would cost, you know, like this first one, three thousand, three eighty-nine.
Okay, so the one under quantity, it's not just one of each.
Correct, correct. That is what I need to know. Yes, sorry.
The math didn't work.
Exactly, yes. And I didn't include, I'm sorry, I didn't include a snapshot of our environment that it is currently today. If you would like to see that, I can share that, but yeah. And that is showing just probably everything you have.
Any other questions for Zach or discussion?
I've heard of Cisco.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with Maraki, what's some history?
Yeah, so Maraki actually started as a camera and telecommunication, telecompany. And then they have, they expanded into network equipment and were bought by Cisco. So everything that is a Maraki equipment is made by Cisco. So it's all Cisco, in fact, we just worked on updating the VPN for our staff to connect to our, safely connect our network. And we worked directly with Cisco engineers in order to make that happen, so. Yeah, it's just a part of Cisco.
Excellent.
I mean, it kind of is like a no-brainer.
So I was hoping you'd say.
That's the right answer.
Thank you, Zach, for all your research.
Yeah, thank you, Zach.
But he's done a lot of work.
Thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be over there if you have any little question.
All right. All right. Move on to the prelim. Okay, all right, next up, we have a preliminary FY twenty-six collection budget presentation slash discussion.
We're good. All right, good evening. Here to present a draft of the fiscal year twenty-six materials budget. I'm happy to answer questions as we move through it, or we can do them all at the end, whatever works for. So looking at the fiscal year, the six materials budget, some of the challenges that came up immediately were are that we're looking for a reduction in the materials budget in order to help accomplish the library staffing goals. We are continuing to see growth with our customers that are utilizing digital resources, so more customers, more checkouts. And there's some unknowns coming up in the next fiscal year, potentially, with our physical book cost. So our current fiscal year twenty-five materials budget is just under four point four million. This draft you have in front of you right now is a reduction of about three hundred thousand dollars or six point nine seven percent. So I'm going to go through some of the major, larger categories. So first up is our seven-one-four-five line, which is our e-media line. So the vendors that we pay in this e-media line are Hoopla and Canopy. And just a reminder, Hoopla, that includes eBooks, audiobooks, movies, music, and TV shows. Canopy is mostly just films and TV documentaries. Both of these vendors use a CPC, cost-per-cirque model. So the library pays every time a new floor is used, or the library pays for our customers. But there are limits per month, so customers are limited to ten checkouts per month in Hoopla, and thirty tickets per month in Canopy. We do not offer reciprocity for neighboring cardholders in these services. Most of the libraries around us also have these services, and we all offer pretty much the same collection. So we, we don't let someone from a neighboring library use our Hoopla collection. So the line item decrease for e-media for next year is twenty-five thousand dollars or three point three three percent. So here's just a snapshot of hoopla use and projections, the hoopla use now and the projections for next year. So the blue dots are where we're at today. It's not quite as neat as the orange square trend line that is predicted, but in general, we trend up for hoopla use. So in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, we had about fourteen thousand five hundred active patrons. And in calendar year twenty-four for Hoopla, we were up to seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-four patrons. So we increased a little over twenty-one percent from calendar year twenty-three to twenty-four. So this is a snapshot of what we pay for in Hoopla and the average cost. So in fiscal year twenty-four, the overall average per cirque was two dollars and twenty-one cents. And then it breaks down by format, you can see there's a lot of variety in different formats, some being a lot pricier per cirque average than others. In fiscal year twenty-five, our average cost per cirque has actually gone down a little bit to two nineteen. And we'll talk more about that, but obviously, it is, it's good to have our average cost per cirque go down, since the use is going up. That's one way that helps us control costs. So just to point out, the ones I'm going to specifically talk about are audiobooks and eBooks. So you'll see audiobooks has remained the same, and eBook has decreased about thirteen cents. So why has the average cost dropped? So one of the things that we started doing at the start of this fiscal year, so July one, is we started duplicating the Hoopla collection of popular adult titles that we had in our overdrive system. So I'll talk more about overdrive shortly, but basically, Hoopla is an amazing resource when you just have a small amount of people wanting to use one specific title, and it works really well for that. So we can say, oh, you want to listen to this CD that maybe not a lot of other people are going to want to listen to? Why don't you get it on Hoopla, we'll just pay a one-time use of a dollar fifty? Where Hoopla gives us trouble is when there's something really, really popular, and we have hundreds or thousands of people that want to use it. The charges add up quickly. So what we decided to try was actually turning off those super popular titles. So we went through the top five hundred titles and said, if we have this in overdrive, we're going to turn it off in Hoopla. And I do think that's been very successful for us. The cost of the e-audiobooks have been increasing steadily for years, and you saw that we're flat for this year, and that eBook price dropped thirteen cents. And that is where most of our Hoopla usage comes from. So eighty-eight percent of our Hoopla expenditures are for eBooks and e-audiobooks. So it's for the customers that want to read or listen to books digitally. Another thing that we did this year that I didn't put on the slide is, and we're still kind of seeing if that makes a difference, is we turned off the app notifications. So Hoopla, the Hoopla app would do like a push notification, you know, like April twenty-fifth, you still have some burrows remaining this month, which is fine. We're happy to have customers use all ten burrows, if they need ten burrows, we're just not going to remind them of that. You've only had that turned off since like January, so I don't know, and it's, it's very hard to quantify if that made a difference, but you know, it's good to try different things and see what happens, so.
And it works, because I can't get these emails to stop by here from any other places in the world. And subscribe and subscribe.
Y'all want to.
Because it worked.
Just as long as you don't unsubscribe from the library. Canopy costs a user information, so Canopy is the other vendor in this category. They went through a big change in fiscal year twenty-four, where they changed from a checkout system like Hoopla to a ticket system, where you have thirty tickets to spend each month, and that may or may not be ten checkouts. So that is a little complicated, and it made it very complicated for us to figure out our number of unique users. But you'll see, our Canopy use is much, much lower than our Hoopla use, but our cost per play is low as well. So even, even, we've been able to drop that for fiscal year twenty-five over fiscal year twenty-four. So what will the impact be of dropping the e-media budget by twenty-five thousand dollars or three point three three percent? What will happen is we will decrease the number of monthly checkout. I'm not sure exactly what will be the right number that will help us, you know, spend all of that budget wisely throughout the year. We're still working on the analytics, and we really want to review the usage these last three months of the fiscal year as well. But we will need to decrease the number of monthly checkouts. What we did with the adult popular content, we're going to also do with the teen popular content. Originally, we really wanted to leave the teen and youth materials and Hoopla open as much as we could, because we spend so little on teen and youth digitally. But some of the teen content is similar to the popular adult content, it gets, you know, hundreds of thousands of usage. They can be some of the more higher-priced items. So if we have that, those items in overdrive, we're going to look at potentially turning them off in Hoopla. One thing I did want to point out is, you know, all these different services work together, we have many patrons that use all of them. So by decreasing the number of monthly checkouts on Hoopla, we could see people shifting to Canopy and raising the usage there, which will in turn have us spending more money. So we're just going to have to watch that use of Canopy. As of right now, we don't have plans to change the number of tickets in Canopy, but that might be on the table as well as we get a couple months into the year. Sure.
Not that we can, I don't want to know who specifically, but is there a way to, if there's any kind of data that when someone checks out an eBook or not eBook, and they have it, is there any way to ever find out if they have that and then don't ever open it and use it, or read it?
We do not have access to that information, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to tie it, I'm not tying it to just a meta data, it's just to see if like, is a third of our checkouts literally just not ever been bad? Maybe it's not, I just wonder.
I do think Canopy has something where if you play it for less than like five seconds or something like that, it doesn't count as a checkout. And most of them have like previews too, because that is a concern. Sometimes we just start an audiobook, and we're like, that audiobook narrator is terrible, you know, like, we don't want to listen to that. So I think that is a good thing to think about and how we can help our customers do the previews. So, oh, I think they do.
I bet you they know.
Yes.
And whether or not they won't share with us or And whether, whether or not they won't share with us or we just haven't asked. That's why I was.
I'll see what I can find out.
I'm sure they know, their stuff gets used. They're like, yeah.
Did I, I'm gonna move on to a different line, but did anyone have any other questions about Canopy and Hoopla? So next, we're gonna look at seventy-one fifty, which is our adult and young adult eBooks. Um, one vendor in this category, which is Overdrive Libby, I kind of use that interchangeably, so I put them together. So for Overdrive, there's a variety of lending models depending upon the publisher. Look at those shortly too, but um, for fiscal year twenty-six, um, we're looking at a line item decrease of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or thirteen point eight seven percent. For youth eBooks, juvenile eBooks, we're also going to see a small decrease, but it's a thousand dollars or two percent. Um, we just don't see the demand in kids' materials like we do kids' materials digitally like we do for adult eBooks. So um, I'm really just gonna focus on that. The one thing I wanted to remind everyone uh is under all those different lending models is that many are subscription or metered license. Either, so they are going to at some point leave the collection, or they have to be repurchased. So we analyzed our eBook collection, and right now we have fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven unique eBook titles. So not actually that many. Um, but forty-one percent of those are on that kind of metered license or subscription model. So that causes us to constantly need to evaluate if we're going to repurchase and then actually repurchase if we're going to. So uh, we're still calculating for this fiscal year, but in fiscal year twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was just spent repurchasing eBooks because customers still wanted to read those books and the demand was still there. So I just wanted to stress like how challenging it is to just actually come into work, open up Overdrive and see that, you know, hundreds of titles just poof, were gone because that day hit the calendar, so. And again, I um, don't expect you guys to know all this, but this is just the top seven publishers that we purchased from in Overdrive and all the different lending models. So there are some that are different for if it's eBook or e-audio. Um, there are ob- obviously a lot of differences among the publishers, but you'll see for eBook, we're really down to only one of our bigger publishers that even offers us the ability to buy a one copy, one user. So that is one that we actually own as a library, that one copy, one user. That's the book-on-the-shelf model. One person can check it out one at a time. And then you'll see all the other options. Is it metered by time, twenty-four months, twelve months? Is it metered by checkouts? Is it metered with one hundred checkouts that can all occur at the same time? So a lot of things happening there. Um, but again, this was just to show how this um metered access really impacts having a robust digital collection in Overdrive for our customers. So this is an example of a title that uh is under a metered access for twenty-four months. It's published by Macmillan. Um, it's still in high demand. Uh, we actually had to purchase fourteen copies in this fiscal year alone. Um, and you can see why we're still purchasing it is because um it still has holds. It has been checked out over three thousand three hundred times in its lifetime, seven hundred and thirty-five just in the past year. But this book actually was released in twenty fifteen.
And, and what did that cost us?
Um, a Macmillan meter for twenty-four months was probably sixty dollars. Per book.
It's three thousand.
Well.
How many times could each?
Times fourteen, the times the fourteen copies we bought this year. How many week copies we've bought over the lifetime? Much more than fourteen. An overview of our Overdrive checkouts from fiscal year twenty. So you can see it's pretty steady growth there. The last gray bar is where we are to date, so have not surpassed our previous fiscal year. I am pretty confident we will be close, if not over it, by the time we hit June thirtieth, so. And uh, I think unique users presents another compelling, you know, graph here in that we actually have surpassed our unique users already year-to-date from the previous fiscal year. So in fiscal year twenty-four, um, we had forty thousand six hundred and thirty-four unique users, and this year-to-date, we've already had forty thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight. Three months to go. About thirty-seven percent of our active cardholders are using Overdrive Libby. So that is a pretty high saturation for one product. Thirty-seven percent of cardholders, of active card. We have about a hundred and ten that were active cardholders.
You mentioned earlier when we were talking about patron limits, ten, thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Might, might, is that per month? Or over what period of time is that limit applied?
So those limits apply to Hoopla and Canopy. Every platform has kind of its own way of looking at limits, and I think I do have the Overdrive limit set here uh shortly, so.
Okay.
So they, Overdrive is not limited by month, but how many you can have at a time?
Okay, that was my question. Um, so do we have many patrons who might have ten or up to thirty checked out at a time? Which is highly unlikely they'll be reading or using ten or thirty at a time?
So most of our customers have one or two items checked out. But we do have customers that have the maximum amount checked out, which is twenty.
Right.
So um, it does vary um a lot, but a huge chunk of our customers are in that one checkout or two checkout range, so.
We do have a few that are basically creating a bookshelf of things they might read if they have time that we have to pay for, whether they ever read it or not.
Well, with Overdrive, we have, we have bought it. Um, it's not that, you know, immediate cost per surf, but you know, it could be on a twenty-six checkout meter, so they had one, they used one of the metered.
You just showed, maybe we would have had to bought fourteen. We do, there were four that were just sitting on these.
Right.
But we don't know that, kinda stuff.
Unfortunately, we don't know whether they're actually gonna read all of the items, whether they did read all the items, that kind of thing, so.
In that case, it could be a family using one card as well. That's true. Or simply doing research, yeah.
Right, all, all kind of things we talked about a little bit last month, but um, we are gonna, we are gonna have to look at that, so. Sorry, the sunlight is getting ready to blind me. I'm gonna have to switch back. It's not even here.
Close the blinds.
So, um, so again, this is a book title I, I know we've talked about. This is probably our most popular book of the year. Um, in, and just, this is the snapshot of what it, what happened both for the physical book and the eBook. So for the eBook, we did uh put in a, an internal limit where we said, we're just not buying any more copies. So we stopped purchasing at a hundred and fifty copies. A hundred and thirty of those hundred and fifty copies were holdable. So the remaining twenty went into our Overdrive Lucky Day collection. So that's just where like if you open up the app and it happens to be available, you can check it out without waiting. So we try to do that for the most popular items. Um, it was released in late January. It's been checked out eight hundred and forty times. It still has a hundred and fifty holes remaining on it, but it started with a thousand and three. So when, when this book was released, we were at a hold ratio of like one to seven point seven, which is much higher than what we're usually at for eBooks. The print book, we purchased fifty-eight copies. Um, we have a similar program with our physical books. We call it our Most Wanted Collection. So forty-three of the fifty-eight were holdable. The rest went to the branches where people could just walk in and check them out, again, if it was their lucky day. Uh, the print book has been checked out a hundred and eighty-five times, and um, it's almost through the hold list. There were only eight holes remaining uh when I pulled this information. Another really popular one, um, you can see kind of the difference in demand, the difference in how many we purchase, and the difference in what's left of the holes. So I would say this had a slower build. Um, it came out at, around the holidays, and so it really built more through January and February, whereas like Onyx Storm dropped with a huge amount of demand. So these are two popular books, but in different ways. This book's coming out next week. Um, so again, just to show, the eBook has five hundred and eighteen holds on it, and the print book has a hundred and twenty-five holds on it. So I know these are some kind of big examples with big numbers, but uh for, for the selectors that are looking at the eBook demand day-to-day, um, we looked at twenty-five different titles coming out in April, May, and June. And out of those twenty-five, twenty-three had higher uh pre-release holds for the digital version. Only two did not, and they were two adult nonfiction titles. But I tried to pull adult fiction, adult nonfiction, some teen fiction. Um, some of them are closer than others, you know, some it's um, you know, just a few more on the eBook. Some of them, uh, The Love Haters, the second From the Bottom by Catherine Senter, um, you know, has like six times the demand in the eBook than the print.
Does that tell you?
It tells us that.
It's older people or are they younger people?
It tells us, well, these are by a lot of different authors that I'd say appeal across a wide variety of ranges. People who have been writing bestselling books for years. I mean, you've got uh,
Steel?
You've got Daniel Steele on there, right? You've got James Patterson, you've got Stephen King, you've got some newer authors to the bestseller list like Carly Fortune, um, Ali Novak. So I think.
Melinda Gates book is a two.
Well, actually, so Melinda, the Melinda French Gates book was winning in the print book hold, but actually, when I checked it today, the eBook holds were up. And so that actually that green, green shading should actually be in the other column now, so.
It's still only seven.
Uh, but I think what this tells us, like looking at Emily Henry's book coming out next week, is that as someone managing the eBook budget, the demand for um new titles for adults can, is huge in the digital space. Um, and if you look back at that slide where I say we actually only have fifty-six thousand eBooks, so there's not a huge amount of choice that we have to offer, offer the customers using the digital space. So when a new book comes out, um, that's going to be popular, um, we're just seeing this huge, huge demand from the eBooks.
Girl, just to clarify, when you say that we only have fifty-six, fifty-seven or fifty thousand titles?
Unique titles.
Unique titles. That is in Overdrive.
Correct.
So when we talk about total digital resources available to our customers, it's Hoopla and Overdrive combined, and we got much more than fifty thousand titles within those two resources.
Correct, but if someone is just using Overdrive, their choices in Overdrive are smaller than if they, you know, went to the physical collection, for example. Um, and also, um, Hoopla doesn't typically get the brand-new titles. So this book um will not be in Hoopla on April twenty-second. So for, for this book in particular, the Overdrive Libby platform is the only way for a customer to get it digitally through the library. Um, I'm gonna move right into the e-audio cuz the eBook and the audio, of course, work, work so much hand-in-hand. Um, our same vendor, Overdrive, um, same variety of lending models. Um, for adult and young adult e-audio, we're looking at a line item decrease of fifty thousand dollars or eleven point two percent. One thing that is not easier, but I guess is making the collection development of e-audio slightly less complex is that um the reorder issues that we have with eBooks are not quite as big of concern yet in e-audio. Um, if I flipped back to that chart, you would see some of the e-audio book publishers are still letting us buy one copy that we can keep. Um, and those that even have switched to the metered model have done so fairly recently, so we don't have that constant cycle of reordering. So the amount we reorder in the audio is significantly less than what we have to do in eBooks. So our same example here, Onyx Storm. Uh, and the reason why I wanted, wanted to show this one is I think this just really demonstrates how there is not demand at all for audiobooks on CD. So we're really only buying the most popular titles. But again, the most popular book of the year um has only been checked out eight times on our audiobook on CD and has been checked out one thousand six hundred and sixty-two times um digitally. Like, there is no alternative anymore really for a digital audiobook. That is the audiobook. That's how it lives. So we can figure out a cost per surf on Overdrive titles, even though that's not this, the way we're charged, but just to get like a return on investment. And Overdrive is better for us than Hoopla. So you'll see the cost, the average cost per surf is much lower. The average, the cost per surf of audiobooks is significantly lower. Um, it's just your, you know, it's that one-person-at-a-time model where Hoopla has that instant gratification and does have the bigger uh selection because it's not just things that we've purchased. We're making accessible an entire collection.
Just to make sure it's clear, so the reason we dedude the collection though is to try to encourage users to use the Overdrive Libby if that product is available there because we're getting it at a much lower price per surf.
Correct, and when I say it's available in Overdrive, I mean, it is at some point available. That doesn't mean it's, it's available at that moment. They may have to join a waitlist in Overdrive Libby.
It's available on demand.
Like it is in Hoopla, exactly.
They have to wait two months.
But you'll see, I think this shows why we, why we have kind of pursued that route cuz again, the return on investment in Overdrive is better for us. So um with those changes in the budget um for fiscal year twenty-six, it will have a large impact on the Overdrive Libby collection. Um, so we will be increasing our hold ratio. So the ones listed on the slide right now are where we are at currently. And again, I, I wanna make sure that we have all the numbers and analyze everything. Um, but it's definitely going to go up from there, probably at least like a six to one for eBooks and a nine to one for e-audios. That still will put us in a similar line with our peers, with our neighboring libraries. Um, but just something to be aware of. We are able to get our current average waiting period in Overdrive Libby, and we're going to be monitoring that very closely. So right now, uh, we are sitting at twenty-nine point one five days, so about a month. We really don't want our customers to have to wait, on average, much longer than that. A month is a, is, is pretty lengthy, so as we um, or if we see that creep up because we've changed the hold ratios, we're gonna have to, you know, review that and see if there are alternatives and ways we can get that wait time back down. And again, I know we talked a lot last month, so I don't wanna go over everything again with our hold and checkout limits. Um, but it's, it seems like we have no choice but to try. Decreasing our checkout and hold limits to see if that helps with that wait time. So um, again, haven't quite landed on what is right for us. I mean, changing limits for customers is, has a lot of impact on people. Um, you know, we have the people, we have families who use one card, we wanna keep that in mind. And we really carefully consider limit changes anytime we do that. If we set a limit for our physical items, if we set a limit for our digital items. So we wanna find something that works for the most amount of customers, um, but also helps, you know. Keep it reasonable and fair for all.
Do, do people have a limited amount of time that they have once they get. Alright, to take the book from.
Yes, so it has a checkout, like a loan period, just like a physical book would. Um, so we, they can do a twenty-one day checkout, a fourteen day checkout, or a seven day checkout. You can, you can set a default for any of those. You can check one out for fourteen days, one out for twenty-one days, so. But it is limited. And then kind of these two, I I think are pretty obvious, but just wanted to make sure. Um, you know, we are gonna have to decrease the number of titles that we repurchase. And we're just gonna be decreasing the number of new titles that we purchase. Um, with the drop in expenditures for these two categories.
Are holds filled in the order received? So the first, you know what I'm asking is, is the first ten people who had to put it on hold because it wasn't available. Are they the first ones to be notified that it's checked in, it's available?
Yes, and then they have, um, so let's say we buy ten copies of something. Numbers one through ten all get the notification at the same time the book is released. They then have three days to either check it out, or they can suspend their hold. Um, and then it would move on to number eleven.
Okay.
Or if they don't check it out, um.
So if you have something on hold and you're notified that it's available, you have three days to check it out or it goes to the next person.
Correct.
Good.
Uh, moving on to our print book collection. So the library ha- definitely has a strong and very popular print book collection. I wanna stress that the budget for print books has been very stable since fiscal year twenty-two. Um, we've only made very slight decreases. We've done a lot of reallocation depending upon popularity in certain areas. Like, for example, we have spent a lot more money recently on kids' graphic novels. Um, but overall, print books, uh, the spending has been very steady. The circulation of print books has been declining, but the spending has been steady. So my goal was to make very minimal cuts moving into this budget, the next budget year. Um, we do, this is where I brought in kind of these unknowns of the cost of print books. Um, most books are printed in China, almost all kids' books, anything, any books with color in them. Cookbooks, so on, pictures. Um, so there's an existing seven and a half percent tariff on books. That's been in place for a while. Um, and right now, they're exempt, books are exempt from any new tariffs. But that situation is very fluid. Um, another thing is the US imports, um. One point eight two billion dollars worth of paper, most of which comes from Canada. So, um, most of that is used to print books, the books that are printed in the US. So all these things could impact the cost of books. Um, they have a pretty tight profit margin, uh, so it could, you know, impact. People who buy books as consumers and the libraries who buy books. So again, very small amount of decrease for all categories of print books. I don't think this will impact our hold ratio for print books, which is four to one. Music, audiobooks, movies and video games. We are seeing a substantial percentage decrease here, but since the actual expenditures. Have been dropping in these categories for years, except video games. Um, it doesn't have a huge impact. So these are the biggest percentages we'll see tonight. Uh, with the tw- almost twenty-five percent and twenty percent, but the dollar amount. You know, is is way less than the ebook and the audio one. And then the last kind of line I wanted to go over was seven, two, two, three, which is our reference and e-resources. So this is our, our databases for research, for homework help, uh, genealogy. Um, we will be dropping at least two resources in fiscal year twenty-sixth. Um, we have selected one of them already. It's our Keel and Context Elementary. It's a research database for students. We have others for students, and this one seems to be the least popular. So we also have, um. We will need to drop a second resource. Right now, we're leaning towards our demographic resource. Because it actually ceased to exist and we are going to have to replace that anyway. So we will just potentially not replace it. We've consult, we're going to be consolidating the coverage in our newspaper databases to a different vendor. And that's led to s- some small savings as well. But this is one of those lines where unless we are dropping something. Uh, it's very difficult to decrease, cause these are all like softwares as service type needs that have, you know. Maybe a two, three, five percent increase every year. Here's a breakdown of how the budget is divided between digital spending and physical spending. This is actually similar to our breakdown of the current fiscal year. But we are dropping the percentage of digital spending slightly. Um, I think we're at about fifty percent this year. And so it's again, slight drop to forty-eight point six six. Uh, thirty-three point three eight for physical materials at checkout. And then almost eighteen percent for that other. And I understand it's very difficult to see this breakdown of percentages. It feels like, wow, that's a lot to spend on digital material. But, you know, I hope I demonstrated like that's where we're seeing the high demand for new items. Um, the structure of the metered license that we're constantly having to repurchase items. And then just also the high cost, which I really didn't even touch on that much. Of like how much all of those are costing us every time we purchase them. Has really, um, made it difficult to make the percentage any different for our library. And to meet the needs of our customers.
Chris, I've never downloaded ebook like that, but is there, is there any option for a? A user in there to like buy the book?
No.
So we can, is there anybody that does that where we would get like a percentage of the sale? A referral fee like they do on, that's what like other people have websites and if you buy something, you use their code, you get. I wonder how many people end up buying the book. Like if they read it, they like it, do they go buy the physical version to have in their collection or do they?
There actually have been some studies, not about digital books specifically. But about like, how does the library as the, as a institution that lends books contribute to the overall? You know, um.
It drives books.
Right, exactly. So, um, and and the very few studies that have been done seem to indicate yes. That people use the library as a place of discovery to try out books, to try out authors, to try out genres. Um, and that seems like exactly what we're here for, so we're, we love that.
Know that some people try to like exploit library users.
And that actually is my last slide this evening, but like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions. You do have the full breakdown um on this spreadsheet. Like I said, I did not touch every single category and every single line, but happy to answer questions.
It, it may be in the data on the sheet, but you know off the top of your head. Roughly what percentage of our digital expenditures are for movies and video games?
Digital or movies well, so.
How much digital expenditures, expenditures, how much goes for movies and video games?
We don't have any, uh, we don't have any digital video games. We only buy physical video games.
Okay.
Um, so, so most of our like digital, like a streaming movie or streaming TV. Comes through Hoopla and we, we know that it's a very small percentage of Hoopla. So, uh, if eighty-eight percent of Hoopla is on books and ebooks, then you've got twelve left for movies, music.
Physical, physical, digital.
Physical movies?
Yeah, you need your hand or CD, it's digital, but it's physical. The physical digital.
You're running me in circles here, buddy.
I mean, it's not an LP, it's not an analog, right? So I mean.
Except for the physical. Can touch it.
Yeah.
So we do, I, we do not have a service where you can like play, play games. Um, the closest thing to that is Hoopla has like a, a binge pass where you can do like, uh. Like crosswords and Sudoku and things like that, but nothing that's, you know, Super Mario Brothers or anything like that, so.
I think the decision points here for the board, one, this is a draft budget, so this, all of this data will be coming back to you in a couple of months for consideration. It's really is a point of point, a point of time for you to consider what was presented and make sure that we're on the right path.
Yeah.
Um, so Carol was asked to look at all, take a hard look at all these lines and figure out where we can actually reduce the budget. She came up with over two hundred thousand dollars in saving reduction. I can't call them savings, cause we're reducing service. And we're saving because of that, uh, in order to kind of offset what we're gonna see the increase in our, our staffing line items. Um, so I, that's, when you get down to it, we are, as you mentioned, cutting significant amounts out of both the digital. Really off of the digital side, the, the services fifty thousand out of, I think Hoopla was it? Twenty-five out of. Twenty-five out of Hoopla. And, um. You know, although that is a growing platform with higher demand, uh, so it's gonna take. There will be some impact to the customers that we may see and Carol and her team will, will honor that to try to minimize those pay points. Going forward, but we just wanna make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, the last slide was basically. What was it, almost forty-eight percent? Slightly less than fifty percent of it going into digital format. Thirty-three and paper and eighteen into our other, those things of forty-eight point nine percent, little slightly less into the digital format. Uh, of this budget line. Um, and then perspective, the budget is about what, four million? Carol, was that the first slide?
So, get back there.
Oh, so yeah, essentially four point one million. Oh, slightly, slightly ha- less than half of that will be going into digital media, our, our consumers. And the other then would go back into, you know, traditional paper and, and other resource catalogs that we have. Um, so from a policy side, that's really what we need the board to think about and, and provide input. And be ready to discuss in a few, a few months.
Alright.
Good. Any additional questions for Carol? Carol, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So next up on the agenda, we do have the Missouri Public Library Standard Section Administration Description. Uh, in the interest of time, we want to postpone this discussion for a part meeting or? Really a question for the trust.
You know, anticipate it being a lengthy discussion, I think we should go ahead and do it.
That's a question for the administration.
We only have a few noes. Answer.
And it appears to me that the, the noes, uh. If they were yes, the district would be spending money.
Yes.
Sending. House to school.
Yes. Yes, you are correct.
What's the money?
So those are a couple of noes and a couple of other ones talk about recruitment and the continuity of board members. And we were a no because of the recent past that hasn't been necessarily, uh, what occurred. But it's something that we feel with John and the role now that is probably gonna remedy itself pretty quickly. So we didn't have many noes. It really was about whether or not we're spending money on board members to attend conferences. And dues for organizations, so.
There's a, there's a, uh, continuing education in Hawaii that we.
Yes, there is, we're all going.
Cut some more, cut some more digital books.
The other questions or discussion points from the board on the. Library Standards Section One Administration? Okay.
There was a lot, anyway.
So it is eighteen after the hour. I think I'd like to give everybody a few minutes, uh. Do what they need to do and I can get myself organized here, so we can be back in twenty-five after the hour when we keep going. Sound good to everybody?
Yep. Return the work.
Uh, a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
Yeah, alright. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
What do you think?
Yes.
You have a self as carrying.
Okay. It is now twenty seven after the hour, I'll call the meeting to order. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. On the nation of God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Robin, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Zucker.
Here.
Trustee Harden.
Here.
Trustee Gartner.
Here.
Trustee Giordano.
Here.
Trustee Collier.
Here.
Trustee Seads. Trustee Tillman. Trustee Manternock.
Here.
Trustee Hazelwood.
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is public comments. We do have one from Mr. Gordon.
Good evening. Um, if you're gonna have a meeting in here about this type, my mind's left in some butter blinds, it's a little unpleasant earlier.
We have to have a tax increase for that.
Yeah, I'm willing to pay it. I know. I'm, I'm genuinely curious about the proposed revision to admission statement. What, what was wrong with the values that were listed in the previous version of admission statement? Someone felt the need to go all their way to cut them. The, the proposal talks about accountability. Doesn't list enough there, doesn't give any justification for moving it, so I'm kind of left to guess here, and, you know, it's a little concerning. Uh, you manage to keep praising of stewardship. But drop mention of customer experience, inclusive access, a freedom to know, respect. And fostering a positive work environment. Now, I'm, I'm an engineer by trade. Part of my job, part of my daily life is turning words into real actions. And some of the words that have given me the biggest trouble, the words that we haven't said. Words that were hard to say, the words that we forgot, the words that we thought were understood. It caused trouble. It costs nothing to leave those values in there. Simple enough to the end back in. But proposal, a couple minutes of your time, get it done. I would appreciate that. In the spirit of accountability, though, if you're only wanting this gone. Hey, go down by, go down that list, line by line. Take a roll call vote on each of them. Show your values, show this county what you believe in. What this library believes and what we should believe in, because I believe in those values. I'll say it loud and proud. I hope you do too.
Thank you. Uh, next we have reports and correspondence, the chief financial officer's report, Julie.
So from the summary page, you'll see that we're ahead of question as far as revenue, we're at about a hundred and thirty percent. Um, and as John referred to, as far as dollars and budget. We are at a hundred and three point seven percent currently, but we are seeing some um available budget in. Basically our supply line programming, which is our summer reading and what have you. Uh, marketing and our technology and telecommunications, and then um as far as our capital projects, we have. Relayed some of those. Our balanced budget, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the trustees on the chief financial officer's report?
And I did want to add that um we will be seeing some further investments by the end of the year. The categories.
Hey. Thanks, Julie. Up next, we have the chief communication and engagement officer's report.
I think I want. Maybe some things that I was pointing out. Um, one, uh. It's to stay compliant with Missouri Library Standards, um, and it's a project we've been working on, working towards. We now have. The big digital screen monitors up in the branches. Uh, has all of the promotion opportunities that we are. Able to create, we create them out of marketing, they run out of one place and um we use software to disseminate it out to the branches, so we're really. Pleased with them and we've gotten great feedback about them, so whenever you're in our branches, please look for them. And then another thing I would like to point out is that we have, uh, the foundation has Tridionite coming up. Next Friday, April twenty fifth, tables are sold out. Sorry about that, but um there are sponsorship opportunities still available, if you're interested, let Jennifer Linden know.
Are there any tables? Have spots? People you know that bought a table.
It's, uh, we, we typically don't sell individual, I mean, we can contact, there are a, a handful of people who have called us.
Cause I just pulled up my email, I was like, oh, I gotta buy a table.
Right, right. We will send out an email asking if anybody wants to fill. Some seats at, um, at some tables, but um typically we don't sell individual seats.
Next year.
Get a table.
I guess it did. I guess the bigger building. It's at scene Peter Parish Center. Uh, so we have fifty tables. Um, fifty tables, so that's four hundred, our maximum is four hundred people. That's a lot of people. Any questions?
Thank you. Up next, we have the chief administrative officers' report.
As I say every month, I'm not going to read the report to you, there's a lot of good information, but I think I would be remiss if I did not talk about taxes since it's tax day. So if you look at page four, six branches hosted tax preparation organizations, and this is as of. Week and a half ago. I mean. Sorry, week and a half ago, so one thousand one hundred and seventy five patrons had their taxes prepared by tax professional volunteers, so um. I just wanted to share that, I thought that was a big one on tax day, also as a reminder, in case yours aren't done.
Which I want to be able to write.
I'd also might file an extension for me.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and also I encourage you to look at the upcoming events. We'd love to have you at some of these events. It's kind of exciting to come.
Are there any questions from the trustees for Tiffany?
Yes.
Up next, we have the chief executive officer's report.
Yeah. Yeah. Two items to highlight, first I wanted to highlight our staff development day, it was last Friday. But I want to really point, uh, Ali Anna. She is a co-chair, what's the president? And uh, we have not had a staff development day since before pandemic. So restarting that, that day, the training and effort was just. Amongst tasks, and it really took. A team that to put this together that worked very diligently and hard. To uh make sure that this was a day that was not only fun for team building. But also provided us a, a great framework for continuing education and. Um, how we can better grow in this organization and, and, and build a. Uh, improved workforce, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Leanne kind of talk through what day and, once again, I won't just. I'm gonna go around pause, I've opened the board.
Thank you, thanks for giving me um time to talk about that really briefly. Um, I was one of the co-chairs this year along with Kristen Sherry, who is the outreach services manager that you've heard from in the past several times. Um, and we had a committee of staff from the different departments and branches, there were about fourteen of them, and they all worked incredibly hard. Um, so it was really a team effort, we all worked really hard all year, and we had just under two hundred employees come. Which was a fantastic turnout. Um, the ones who couldn't make it were mostly like out of town or had other commitments where they couldn't be there because they don't normally work on a Friday. Um, but pretty much everybody who could be there was, um, and they were really excited to have that opportunity. So we got a chance to hear from John, we had a chance to hear from a keynote speaker, and then staff got to attend breakout sessions of interest to them for their. Personal or professional life or both, things on productivity, things on managing stress. Um, chance to get certified for, re-certified for CPR, um, all kinds of different breakout sessions and opportunities. Um, as well as just experience that camaraderie of talking to each other and having staff connect across different departments and branches and just remember. Remembering like the vision and the mission of the library, so it was a great success, everybody was thrilled to have that opportunity and really excited to be restarting that tradition, so. Very happy to be bringing you a good report on that.
Thank you. And I, uh, asked Leanne to give that report like. Five minutes ago. Great job, and you know, you can tell from her enthusiasm. The time and effort and enthusiasm that they put into preparing this day, and it really was exceptional.
I had a. Like a friend, my wife's, seeked me out to make comment about who's an employee. Just wanted to make sure I knew how great it was. I mean, just like, hey, the board needs to know, it was. Organization of it was great, they, they learned a lot, but they thought it was really worthwhile and wanted to. Make sure that they got publicized. About how appreciative that they were.
It was a great opportunity, and like I said, it. We have two hundred people, um. Coming together, it's a lot of coordination, and there's a lot of work behind the scenes, and so, well. Majority of the staff was able to kind of relax and enjoy the day. There was this committee of fourteen that were really doing the work and, and behind it, and, and it just really turned out. Very exceptional, so I want to make sure. The other item is, um, we are very excited about the. Hopeful, what will be the reopening of Mendor Perel, you know, Colin. Um. We are. Working diligently, or we are not, but I guess a lot of our folks are working. Um, making sure that our contractors, uh. Do the final work and that the work is done at high quality and, and, and getting completed. We are targeting a opening of April thirtieth. Um, that is, obviously we've not released that quite yet to the press, so we're not really announcing that's the opening. That is our goal internally, and we hope that here in the next week or so that we can actually make that announcement and feel good that we're going to be able to hit that date. Um. Our staff. Jennifer, who's there? Hello Jennifer, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You and your team have been doing a great job of getting the books and everything ready, right?
We're just working to make sure everything's in place and that we have enough books back on shelves, like. Welcome the public to the renovated building.
And it is coming together, um. The children's section, there's some pictures of the millwork that's going in before that to really make that pop when you walk in the door. The renovated restrooms that are really accommodating to the, um, the customer base that we have of just, you know. They were outdated and now they're, now they're what you expect when you come to a facility of, of the size and organization. Um, circulation is, you know, the model there is a little different than what we've had other branches, it's more behind the, uh, behind the scenes, which I think is great, passports. High visibility, high visibility when you come into, um, the help desk. So great, really good sightlines throughout the branch, I'm excited for the board of trustees to get the opportunity to tour it. And see it, and more excited that hopefully on April thirtieth that we can have it open to the public and, and, and the families and the community can. Come back to using that facility, um, so those, that's my reports.
You, any questions for John on this report? Moving on, we have the statistical report.
I do not have anything, I think we've talked about a lot of this already. Um. I have nothing.
Yeah, one of the features of MK is bringing the whole topper side, so it will be accessible. Now twenty four seven again, which is what we're. Goal for many of the.
Uh, moving on to correspondence, we do have an email from the city of St. Peters dated four one twenty five, resolution sixteen seventy two in support of Missouri House Bill fourteen. Moving on to correspondence, we do have an email from the city of St. Peters dated four one twenty five, resolution sixteen seventy two in support of Missouri House Bill fourteen.
So in the packet, there was the city St. Peters been passed a resolution. Hospital fourteen oh five was introduced by Representative Self. And what that fourteen oh five does, it re-appropriates how the board members, the board trustees are appointed. Appointed. So currently we have Mayor Pagado, our mayor, Board Minor appoints four board members, and the county executive appoints five. So fourteen oh five, if passed, will keep the counties five appointees. The other four will be shared by the four larger cities. So St. Peters, O'Fallon, and Wentzville would also be making an appointment to the board, and then St. Charles would have one appointment. So that's the, I would do. So city of St. Peters, they pass a resolution, they send on their letter. And support. It's my understanding that both the county's active and mayor for Meyer favor it fourteen oh five.
Okay, yeah, they are. Did I check on it lately to see where it's at?
It made out, it made it out of the local government committee.
Is it due pass?
It's due pass. And we're coming after that.
It'll pass many bills. Last year, I think it only passed eighty seven.
I think from the library district,
I'll check.
What it would, if it does pass, it obviously provides that additional representation in the western part of the county. I think it's the goal of the bill. And you know, it would achieve that by having the mayor of Wentzville and, and O'Fallon and St. Peters being able to provide appointments.
I think it's good. John, have you had any conversation with Dan Boardmeyer? Is he comfortable with this?
Yeah, he was, him and the county's active met and are supportive of the bill.
Any other questions from the trustees on our correspondence from the city of St. Peters? Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have the minutes for approval, the draft minutes from the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five work session and regular meeting. Hoping that everyone has had a chance to review those and has given Robin any corrections if they were noted. I would seek a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes from the March regular session and work session meeting.
So moved. I second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the formal agenda. We have no unfinished business, new business. We have twenty five dash twenty six approval of Maraki enterprise agreement.
Right, I won't read the agenda memo to you. The content was explained to you like that. So if you have any additional questions, add that discussion. If not, what we're requesting is that you support the CEO to approve the Maraki enterprise agreement through Worldwide Technology.
The total of this is three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and four dollars forty eight cents.
Yes, correct.
And it's a seven year term.
Seven year term.
As Julie stated, Zach kind of gave us an overview during the work session for those who are not in attendance. So if the board has any additional questions of Zach or Julie?
Just to make note that the savings in doing this are significant and impressive compared to what we had been spending.
Good point. If there are no further discussion or questions, I will seek a motion for the approval of twenty five, twenty six, the Maraki enterprise agreement that authorized the CEO to approve the agreement through Worldwide Technology.
I so moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Next up, we have twenty five dash twenty seven revision to policy B zero four eight, mission and vision statements.
For the board is a update to our mission and vision statement. Forty eight, the, probably being there a forty eight, the existing mission statement is a library inspires and forms and enhances connections across St. Charles County. That mission statement is, it's a little vanilla. And so when we look and talk to customers about what does enhanced connections really mean? What we're really mean when we say that is that we're here to build relationships. The library is much more than books. It's about building community. It's about building relationship. It's about being that foundation of a society. The, how do we do that as a library? Well, we, we do that through urging that lifelong love and learning, through literacy and personal growth. So we want to make sure that we capture those items in our mission and vision statement. So we also thought the mission statement should be more kind of, it has more of an action, I guess. So what we're proposing, the mission statement be revised to is that we unite curiosity, build relationships, inspire growth, inspiring those that we serve through literacy, learning, and discovery. Guided by the principles of stewardship and accountability, we strengthen our community one story at a time. One story at time could be looked at several different ways. Obviously, each book in our, our collection is one story. But it's also each interaction that we have with customers is a story. It's, you know, it's our outreach going out and delivering books to those that are homebound. It's our outreach program, you know, that deliver materials to the nursing homes. They're creating those stories. It's our programs that we have that bring people from all throughout the community within our branches and within our walls. They're creating those points of entertainment and opportunities for families to interact that are creating those stories. And then, of course, it's the, it's the literature that we bring on the shelves. That point of having a piece of paper, if you're still like me, that enjoys that, the reading from paper, that's creating that story and that memory. That's really the focus of this district. And so that was not captured in our current mission and vision statement. Does that really work here fundamentally? To unite that curiosity, that joy of discovery of wanting to learn, build relationships, and inspire people to grow in their life. We want to be part of that growth one story at a time. Our vision statement was the St. Charles City County Library is a catalyst for customers to build successful lives, families, and community. Again, again, that's a, I think that's a good vision statement. There's nothing really fundamentally wrong with that. We tried to tweak that to say we, no one's can provide more action. We aspire to be a vibrant and trusted resource that empowers individuals and wrenches communities by nurturing lifelong love of learning, literacy, and personal growth. Once again, hitting upon those key hallmarks of lifelong of learning, literacy, and personal growth. And then our tagline, just kind of that more simple thing that you can just boom, 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 that elevator type speech would be empowering minds, enriching communities, inspiring lifelong learning. Once again, hitting on those core fundamentals that we want to build. So that regardless if you come to a business in a branch, whether you're checking out digital media, whether you're attending a program, we're all about building that community, building those relationships, relationships, and helping inspire people to just want to continue to learn and grow. And so we're, I'm thinking that our new mission and vision statement captures that a little better than the old one. And so that's why we're proposing this for the board tonight.
Thank you. Are any questions from the trustees on revision of policy B zero four eight?
I'd like to say that I read it when I came across and I really liked it. I do appreciate the comment, the public comment. And I reread it sitting here with the values because values are so important. But I do believe the way it's written, we are putting the values in there because we aspire to be, you know, a trusted resource and nurture all of this with the learning, literacy, and personal growth and empowering minds. And I mean, I, I, I do believe that all comes in there without just the bullet points. So it was a good change, but I do appreciate your, because I reread it to make sure the values were there, and I think the values are in the new statement. I like it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the trustees? Being none, I will seek a motion.
I move the adoption of agenda item twenty five, twenty seven.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Twenty five, twenty seven is passed. With no further business in front of the boards this evening, the final agenda item is adjourned. I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Move through, John.
We have seconds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?